I'll go ahead and start this afternoon's work session. For the record, it is Tuesday, December 3rd. It's 4:30. We'll start with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burton?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Sorry, absent is Councilmember Borton. Madam Mayor Dewird?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Item 5A has been requested to be vacated from the agenda. And with that one change, I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those...oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so item 5B, since I was...or A was removed, is a report from the Finance Department and City Clerk's office, both presenting their key performance indicators.
Madam Mayor?
You're good. There's no new councilmembers are here. No problem. Madam Mayor, Mayor of Wisconsin, good afternoon. Appreciate this time to be able to present to you the KPIs for the Clerks and Finance Department. Tonight, or today, what we'll do is we'll present to you a handful of KPIs. There's gonna be a total of five of them. There're gonna be public records requests. We're gonna show you the KPIs for licenses and permits. Follow that up with RFP and RFQ processing. And then utility billing, phone calls. And then last but not least, we'll give you a KPI for what we call our Fund Reserve KPI. So with that, our very first KPI that we want to report on is managed out of the Clerks Department. This is our Public Records Request KPI. Our overall outcome for this KPI is to increase our customer service satisfaction. And the way we will obtain this outcome identifier is through surveys and inquiries with our customers. So for the calendar year to date, up till October-ish, November-ish timeframe, we had 599 public records requests submitted to the Clerks Department. The various types of public records requests we're not yet identifying, but it is on our to-do list. We're working with...or Chris is working with IT to have a little tag system within our tools so that we can now track the different types of PRRs so we can add another layer of our KPI management. Our internal goals for KPIs is that we answer 80% of all public records requests within three days. That's 80% within three days. And then the secondary goal of ours is to satisfy 95% of all of the requests within eight days. The next column kind of shows you our results. Our average response for the 200...or for the 599 public records requests were 2.37 days. Again, that is the average. We've had 70...was it 76...75% within...answered within three days. And then we had, last but not least, we had 94% within the eight days. So again, we missed it by 1%, but again, this is the KPIs that we're using to track to make sure that we're meeting our goals and meeting our collective that a majority, 75% of our current customers are happy or satisfied. That is our KPI indicator for public records requests. The next one is licenses and permits. Again, just like the last one, our ultimate outcome is to have our overall customer service and our satisfaction to the customers 100%. And the way we'll get those indicators is by surveys and having limited to zero errors on our issuances of the licenses and permits. Of for fiscal or not for fiscal year, I apologize, for calendar year to date, we had about 5,500 licenses and permits issued by the Clerks Department. Of that, we had about 13 various different licenses and permits issued. Our number one, our number one license or permit issued, leading the pack, would be our dog licenses at about 2,900. And then traveling right behind that one would be passports at a little over 2,000. So just those two alone is about 5,000 permits of the 5,536. So you can see where the majority of the work is. It's just those two types of permits as licenses. Yes?
When you present this kind of in the dashboard form, can you call out some of those on what your higher numbers are and maybe what it compares to the year before? We've made some change doing better. Because we know there's more dogs than that.
Gotcha.
Anyone that knocks on...
Yes.
So I just think we've given a lot more kind of collaboration with...
Suggestion, I can guarantee you that Chris is tracking all 13 by detail. We have a slide here that shows all 13 by detail for the year, but we thought that was a little too many numbers. But again, we're happy to show that on future dashboards so you can see how they are trending year over year for you by permit and license type. So appreciate that. Our goal for this particular KPI is that all 20...that we get about 25% of all licenses and permits issued and manage via the website, via the internet. We don't have the data yet, but it is on our goal. And we're now starting to track that data so next year we'll be able to say, yes, we are using technology, we're being more efficient, and we're meeting our customers' needs by using the technology to transmit the information. But right now, we don't have it yet, but hopefully next year we'll be able to answer that question by permit and license type. So that is KPIs for licenses and permits. The next one is RFP and RFQ.
Madam Mayor?
Oh.
Ms. Mylum?
Yes.
Sorry, Todd.
Yeah?
So I'm just trying to do the math in my head and I didn't break down my calculator.
Uh-oh.
Right? But if roughly 90% of your licenses are dogs and passports, so can dogs be done online? Because passports can't. So the hard part is getting people in for the first time.
Correct.
Get that done. Okay, because I'm like, if you have 90, there's no way that you could do 25% online if those two were.
Yes, we do have the possibility of reaching 50% as that'll probably be our... Thank you for the question. And thank you, Chris. Next one, again, RFP, RFQ. This is managed in the Purchasing Department. Again, our ultimate outcome here is again, customer service with limited errors and limited reissuances, or not reissuances, but limited request for new data or resubmission of data. For calendar year to date, we had five RFPs and RFQs issued. Again, our key indicator to let us know if we're doing well is again, could be customer feedback from our customers, the processing time comparison, and also the limited errors analysis. Here, we do have the types that we're tracking. We have...we had one RFP for the year and four RFQs. Our goal is to have 90% of all these requests processed within 101 days. Our average processing time for the five items was 128 days. And the comparison to our goal, did we meet it? We met two of five within 101 days. So you're asking, well, that doesn't seem to be super great. There are a lot of things out of our control that we...that show...don't show here. I...you guys remember last year, we had a scooter, timely discussion here, a scooter RFQ? And there's a lot of...I'm gonna say there's some challenges, some discussions. Well, that prolonged the timeframe, which is a part of the process that we manage. That's just part of the RFP and RFQ process. But those dates, those additional days are accounted for in our total time allocated. So again, there are some things that we can't control. We had one item that took 242 days. That was because three months was involved with contract negotiation and contract development. Again, nothing that we can manage on our processing side. So again, we understand our goal is 90% within 101 days. We know that we can get to it, but just wanted to clarify that there are some things we cannot control, but we'll continue to take the data, as the mayor has always said, learn from the data, adjust from the data, and make data-driven decisions. This will help us fine-tune our processes to make sure we're meeting our customers' needs. Next item is utility billing, phone calls. Again, our ultimate outcome is to learn what our customers are calling about, to make adjustments to our electronic phone tree system based on the information we're gathering by the types of phone calls our customers are giving to us. And then also update our website to meet the needs of the types of phone calls that we're receiving. So is there information we can put on our website that would satisfy our customers' needs to maybe not...or eliminate the inconvenience to call us? They have it at their fingertips. So that's our ultimate outcome. The indicator is gonna be the tracking of everything for the year. You can see we had received 30,000-plus phone calls in utility billing. That equates to a little over 2,500 phone calls by month. We don't have the types of phone calls yet. Our team is collecting that data now to figure out why our customers are calling us so then we can now adjust and meet our outcome desires by improving our data transmission to our customers at the end of the day. So again, this is another in-process one, but we're gonna collect the data so we can improve our customer engagement for our utility billing team. And then the last one for today's KPI presentation is fund balance. This one is policy-driven. You'll hear from me in a few presentations about policy. This here...this slide reflects the policy changes on the document I provided you. So again, our ultimate outcome on our policy or KPI for fund balance is to meet our policy, number one, and to make sure that we're fiscally responsible with the funds that we have. The indicator will be by the Finance Department to make sure that we set aside the proper amount of funds that meet the policy as approved by the City Council. These are the two goals by the Enterprise Fund and the General Fund. Both of them have an operational reserve and an emergency reserve. Both of these reserves are...will be reflected in the policy discussion that we have a little bit later. But I can tell you, the goals have been met year over year for our reserve balances, and we'll continue to meet the reserve balances as dictated by the policies set forth. So those are the KPIs that we wanted to present to you from the Clerks and Finance Department. And again, stand for any questions.
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Todd, a question on the Public Records Request KPI. My assumption is that those numbers also include, if we respond to them, that we can't fulfill their request for any number of reasons. So I know in some cases, somebody requests information that's confidential, deals with employees, stuff like that, so we don't release it. We send them a letter that says, hey, we can't release that, and here's the reason why. When we talk about the responses, I assume that's both fill a public records request and comments that we're not gonna fill the public records request. Is that accurate?
Look, great question. We have the two subject matter experts in the house, so I'll pass it on to them.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, yes, it includes everything we complete. So anything that is...we have the record, we don't have the record, we have it but can't give it to you anytime we provide a response is included in that number.
Madam Mayor, follow...Chris, maybe. Chris, what's the law? How quickly do municipalities have to respond when we receive a public records request?
Great question. We have to provide an initial response within three business days, and then we have up to 10 business days to provide a complete response. So the goal of three days is really our goal, but it is not required to be completed by then. We just have to provide an initial response, which is, again, we have it, we don't have it, we need more time, we're getting it, but we try to do everything within the three days, but we have up to 10 to provide a response.
And I do think that you respond within that three days to tell them if it's gonna be longer. So they do meet that piece of IHO code. And then it could be an extensive record, you need legal to go through it. We might have a technology challenge. There's a couple of different influencers, and the three-day period, they keep on top of it to make sure that the requester is informed.
Madam Mayor, one additional question then. So quick math, I think there's 32 that we didn't fulfill within the eight business days. Were those all fulfilled within 10 days? Or were there extenuating circumstances that we weren't able to fulfill it? Then what's our policy in terms of communicating with the public? We're not able to meet it within 10 days.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, we respond to all within 10 days. We've not missed that mark. Excuse me. We've also met the three-day mark for an initial response every time as well.
Awesome. Great work. Thank you. Not all. Madam Mayor, just to that point, there's a lot of jurisdictions at the state, local, county level that don't fulfill those within 10 days. So I know that's not listed here, but I think that's also some...I mean, we're government, so we shouldn't celebrate or pat ourselves on the back by following the law.
Any other questions? And also under the Finance Department, and Brad is here.
...for you, Mayor, for supporting, and just really everybody that has been involved in this. It's truly a citywide effort to get where we are at currently. And I just want to, before I launch into this, just say to everybody on record, thank you for that support. It's been amazing to see that support and just everybody's involvement. And it's been...we've had some fun conversations. It's been enlightening and certainly a learning process. So with that, let's talk about kind of what we're gonna go over. We're gonna start off by talking about what is priority-based budgeting. And talk about, Mayor, you mentioned, I guess, our goals, the results from Phase 1, what that is, what's next. We're currently in the process of Phase 2. I'll get into what that means. And once we've gone into all of that, we'll wrap up with some questions. So with that, ask the question, what is priority-based budgeting? Priority-based budgeting really is a methodology that allows us to link our strategic goals to our budget. It's a unique methodology that lets us do that. It starts by creating a list of programs that answer the question, what do we do as a city? Once we've come up with that list of programs, we have over, I think, over 200, about 210 programs. Once we've answered that question, we then work through methodology to assign the costs so we understand, you know, what our budget is. Now we understand what that budget looks at like from a program standpoint. The reason why we do this is it then lets us begin to go through a process, which we're currently in the process of doing called scoring, which lets us prioritize all of our programs into quartiles. So quartile 1 programs are ones that contribute the most towards our strategic goals. And quartile 4 programs don't align as much or don't contribute as much to our strategic goals. Having that information gives us some more data. And we can use that data to make better decisions on how are we allocating our resources, future funding requests, some of those things. It is considered a best practice by the Government Finance Officers Association. It's a big acronym, GFOA. It's been a best practice for the last few years because it's a unique way of evaluating how you make decisions. One thing it does is it also improves transparency by giving us a full view of what it costs to do what we do. I have a fun little exercise we'll go through here in a minute that will illustrate that specific point and a few others. Priority-based budgeting also represents a culture shift in the city. We're used to looking at things from a fund level, a department level. We're all in our silos. It's kind of an interesting shift to look at things from a citywide standpoint and ask the question, you know, how much does it cost to, you know, run our finances citywide or public records requests citywide? Or you have 210 programs that represent a citywide approach to kind of identifying and quantifying those things that we do. So with that, I mean, that is what priority-based budgeting is. It's a methodology. It's a way to help us make decisions. We wanna...I mentioned earlier, we wanna make some data-driven decisions. It's one of our goals is to make better decisions using this information, have those conversations that are productive. And, you know, once we have that program inventory and we have the prioritized list, we can then, you know, make decisions and have the conversations of, you know, how are we spending our time currently? Are we allocating our time towards, you know, those programs that are contributing most or move the needle towards our strategic goals? Or are we allocating them towards programs that we may be spinning our wheels on or don't contribute as much towards those goals? We have a...we'll have a view of that once we've completed this second phase, which is...would be fun. One thing we'd like to do is link our staffing reports to our strategic goals. We're gonna be able to evaluate the programs, upcoming programs that we...or projects that are coming in and say, all right, you know, if we're building a big box store or something, how is that going to impact our budget? Or how is that gonna impact the programs that we have? Or what programs are gonna be impacted by a specific project? Something that we're kind of working on, something we would like to do. Just, again, to provide more data, create more conversations so we can make more informed and better decisions, so to speak. We also like to integrate priority-based budgeting in that idea of linking our strategic goals to our budget by checking the alignment. You know, are we aligning ourselves more towards those programs and things that contribute towards our goals? Or are we not? In term planning tool, that we can also link to this to help us not only plan what we're doing in the current fiscal year's budget, but also on future budgets and future budget requests as they come in. We can evaluate all those things and give a better understanding by understanding what programs that are influenced by, you know, whatever the budget request is. You know, is that request one that would move the needle more? You know, would it help improve things? Or would it not provide some context towards what we do? Useful tool. We also would like to follow what we call the PBB Blueprint. I have some examples of exactly what that is. One of the methodologies is looking at things from an efficiency standpoint. Peak Academy is a great candidate. In fact, we were at a conference last August where they did an introduction on Peak Academy, which I thought was interesting because since I'm no trainer for that, I thought it was a fun thing to watch. But it's ones that we do. Can we make them more efficient? That is one way of freeing up resources that we could then allocate elsewhere to more important projects or just whatever we decide. Again, having that conversation. Cost recovery is another important consideration with this PBB Blueprint. Once we understand, you know, we understand the cost, what we do and the cost, and we understand the prioritization part of it, the one thing we...after understanding, you know, the total cost of what we do, we can then evaluate, are we recovering what we should? Are we recovering our costs? Are we following the policies and procedures that we've set up? It's a good evaluation tool for that. It's also a way to evaluate partnerships. We have some productive conversations and partnerships with, you know, Boise and Prosecution Services. And there are many ways to evaluate kind of how we source what we do in those programs. The PBB Blueprint is really a methodology that allows us to do that. Now, this next slide I really like. This is taken from our Resource X, straight from our conference that we took. But it shows you a few things. Let me unpack what we're looking at here. The City of South Jordan implements priority-based budgeting. They've been able to free up $12.5 million that they are able to allocate towards other programs that they provide, you know, move the needle more towards what their goals and objectives are. The way they did that is by...there's really two methodologies. There are two categories. You can free up and reallocate resources, or you can generate new revenue. What I mean free up and reallocate resources, you see at the top there, they were able to free up $2.5 million to allocate based on the way they source things, whether they in-sourced or outsourced. You know, looking at those, making those decisions, having those conversations, they're able to, you know, free up $2.5 million that way. Looking at efficiencies, Peak Academy again, and going through those programs and making them more efficient. So we're not spending as much time wasting time when we don't need...when, you know, not needed. They're able to, you know, free up $2.4 million that way. Service levels. They're able to free up $2.5 million looking at service levels. And what that means is, you know, do we maintain the service level? Do we decrease it? If it's something that we isn't aligned with what we're supposed...what we've identified as a strategic goal, or do we increase it? Again, having those productive conversations so we can make those decisions. Obviously, when we're, you know, the city and Meridian's version of this will look different, but it's interesting to see what other municipalities have done. On the generate new revenue, I mentioned earlier that we understand what it costs to do what we do. We can evaluate, you know, how much revenue we're bringing in. Are we charging what we're supposed to charge based upon our policies? You know, does that make sense? They're able to bring in some additional revenue that way as a result. This one, they also, you know, the last option is, you know, with taxes and rates, which is another part of that. I like this slide. This is from Washington County, Wisconsin. They were able to free up $11.5 million. As you can see, they actually cut taxes by 9% or 9.4 million dollars. Yet they are still able to free up $11.5 million in total. And they can use that to apply to other programs that maybe they're not doing or programs that they are doing that they would like to be doing more of. The same methodology here. By freeing up resources, they were able to free up $5.3 million by looking at sourcing, 6.1 by efficiency, looking at service levels. They were able to evaluate their cost and their cost recovery policies and were able to improve things from that standpoint. And they're able to actually reduce, you know, the tax revenue that's been generated or the fee revenue that's been generated. These two are really good examples of what, from a future standpoint, we would like to be doing, having those conversations, the methodologies that we follow.
I'm Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
Go ahead. Sorry. All right, I don't wanna come to the end.
Yeah, please. Go ahead. Lots of information.
So do you...on those two cities, do you have any idea what their total budget is?
I don't.
Compared to us?
I'm not sure. I can find out for you if you like, see what the South Jordan and that...
Yeah, I mean, it'd be just kind of interesting to see how they are total compared to us if we could, you know, have some idea what we could possibly expect.
True.
Madam Mayor?
Good point.
Mr. Palmer?
You're looking it up?
Yeah, I was looking up South Jordan. So their population, I remember a few minutes ago, was 71,000, I think. And if I'm reading this right, it looks like their general fund budget for 1920 is just over $50 million, $50 million. So it's comparable in size, you know, a little smaller actually than...
Smaller.
Than regular, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you, Todd.
Much smaller, thank you.
Or Councilman Palmer. No, good question. Any other questions? I've gone over a lot. Okay? We have a site that actually breaks down all of the programs that we have. We have both an internal and an external site. Can we go over every...not that one. Perfect. So I mentioned earlier, we have over 200 programs. It's around 210 programs. Each of these programs, we have them listed alphabetical at this point. I think there was...Jenny, wanna click on one of those? Bike Patrol, let's look at that one.
Yeah, look at Bike Patrol, let's look at that one. So we can dive into each of these and say, all right, what makes up the, the fifty-three dollars and thirty-seven? You know, what makes that up? You have some non-personnel costs, that's stuff like your operating costs, office expense, those type of things. You also have personnel costs. Let's see, we can tell how much time a, a person is allocated towards that. So if we click on that, we can say, all right, we have a, the school resource officers have allocated, looks like fifty-one. So a small percentage of their time towards it, but you can see who is allocating some of their time to those programs. You can also see from a revenue standpoint, you know, what makes up bad as well. I think it's grants. Let's click on that. There we go. So you can see, all right, false alarm fees, rental income and fines and for, for true revenue. This internal is a kind of an internal tool that we can use, all the departments have access to it, to look at, you know, how we're spending our time. You know, does this make sense? Are we collecting the revenue that we should be? Or are we not? Having those questions, we have, you know, there's two hundred, we can walk through this on all two hundred programs that we have, two hundred plus programs. This being an internal-facing one that our departments can use. We also have an external-facing one that shows a lot. We've gotten a lot of accolades and appreciation for our village picture. A lot of people really like it. I specifically really like it. But what we're looking at here really shows us the results because we're linking our strategic plan to our budget. We can look and say, all right, how much does a specific program contribute towards arts, culture and recreation, or economic vibrancy, safe, health, secure, strategic growth, responsive government? And the way we do that, there's a cool little plot here. You can tell by the shading that the darker their shading, sorry, the more it contributes towards a specific result. In this case, we're talking about arts, culture and recreation. So General Parks Maintenance, Home Court, these are not final. We're still halfway through the scoring process, so these aren't finalized, but it gives a preview of what we're looking at. The shading tells you how much it contributes towards our strategic goals, so you can look here. Parks and Rec is the, you know, they show a score on this one program. General Parks Maintenance is a four. Some might be a three, or a two, or a one. It just shows you a grade of, of, you know, four being it contributes most, one being it contributes less, so to speak. The lighter the color, the less it contributes, the darker the color, the more. Now, also, the size of the box we're looking at indicates the size of the program. So the bigger the box, the more funds that are associated with that. The smaller the box, the, the smaller the program. So you have the size of the box, which will not change as we look at the different priorities, but the shading will. This is just an interesting preview on how all the programs that we have contribute from a arts, culture and recreation standpoint. If we look at economic vibrancy, we can say, all right, you know, the, the shading changes. Public Works shows up a lot there. They're an important aspect of, you know, that, that part of the strategic plan. You know, fire as well, parks are also an important part. Again, based on the shading, you can see which programs contribute most, which contribute less, you know, citywide across all of our programs. Safe, Health and Secure, I think you can guess what this one will look like.
Wow.
So you can see that, you know, items like patrol or traffic, emergency response and fire, you know, even, even parks, public works, all, you know, the darker their shading, the more contributes, the lighter the shading, the, the less, so to speak. Now, I, I do have to throw a caveat, since I'm in finance, we, we have two types of programs. There are programs that are community-facing, and those are directly scored or reviewed against our strategic plan. And then you have programs that are internal, which are kind of governance-type programs. Those programs are, for instance, right here, are measured against responsive government. So when you click on responsive government, you will see that, oh, look, we are kind of important, from that aspect, but.
Well, we're glad you're important.
You know, we're not as important, but you know, we're, we're in the running somehow, right? Again, it's information. It's, it's data. It's, it's ways to have a conversation, to have, make better decision. And finally, you know, strategic growth, you know, what programs are most important to our strategic growth? We have patrol, traffic, emergency response. You can see by the shading, you know, how well they initially have scored themselves. We're validating those scores right now in a peer review process, which hopefully we'll have wrapped up soon. And so this can change a little bit based on, on those results, but this is a cool preview. With that, we have a little experiment. I need a couple volunteers. How do I?
We do, Annalyn Roberts, she has the budget book.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Yes, you can get her the big book.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts.
There you go.
Councilwoman Roberts, I'm sorry.
She gets technology.
He's the technology guy.
And, Councilwoman Mylan, thank you. So I have a question for you.
Right, we're going to, Brad will tell you.
So you have this site that we've just been going over, you're an expert on it now, right? There's a little search tool you can look at, and you can, you can look for whatever program you want. Our goal here is to identify how much it costs to do something. So if somebody asks us, how much does it cost to do, let's say, audit? We can say, all right, I'll give you a hint, it's in finance.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you can take a look and see, how much does it cost us to, to run our audit?
Over here. Oh, it's a hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Sold, and we saved tons of paper.
I am invited.
You're, that, that, that's good.
I love this.
Now, an interesting aspect, it may not call out specifically audit in, in the base budget there. And when it does, I think it's around fifty thousand dollars. So there's a difference between what we're, what we would find in the budget book and what we find here. That difference really is made up of the time spent by, by staff doing the audit. Oh, okay. So if you look at your screens here, you can see total cost, kind of like we have the same thing earlier. Oh, position, sorry. We can see what positions were involved with that. Again, information.
You didn't do very much.
So let's do, let's do one more.
I thought she was going to win.
I'll give you head, I'll give you head start. This one's in Parks and Rec. What about our, our sports leagues? How much do we spend on sports leagues? Like our adult sports leagues?
Leagues? Three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars.
There you go.
How you doing, Ann?
I'm there. That's pretty good.
See, I got there really, really fast, that was really good.
Posted notes. This is awesome.
Posted notes help.
Cool, thank you.
Again, it, it provides a full look. I mentioned transparency earlier. This is a, this site is one that can be public-facing. We can, you know, provide this to the public and have them look at it, and they can see exactly what it costs to do these programs. You have a question?
Madam Mayor, yeah. Mr. Cavanaugh. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brad, the, the, as you know, I've, I've been really fascinated with this for a long time, and I'm excited that council's getting a chance to play with it a little bit. The part that I, I haven't wrapped my head around is when you, when you pulled up the, the personnel time breakdown.
Right.
How is that determined?
Sure.
We're not having employees log, I've worked four hours this week on audit and eight hours on this. I mean, how, how are we coming to that determination in terms of time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanaugh, appreciate that question. So part of the determining how much it costs is having everybody evaluate, you know, we have a list of programs in a department that says, this is how, what we do in our department. Well, they would allocate their time according to, you know, if I spent five percent of my time, or ten percent of my time, eight percent. You look at, on a total scale, how much on average? It is a little subjective, but you have to have a, think through and evaluate, how much do I spend on a given year on a specific program? So we had everybody really in the city go through that process. Even Madam Mayor went through that same process and went through and said, oh, you know, I think I'm three percent here, or five, I'm a ten percent here, and up until we had a hundred percent of our time allocated. Once we had the hundred percent allocation, we then simply, it's just a simple math problem where you take a salary times a percentage, gives you a dollar amount to apply to a program.
Madam Mayor, follow up. How does that then compare? If some employees, all employees do a great job, but some work forty hours, there are some employees that work fifty hours. How, how are we comparing if, if you've got multi-different employees that are working on something, and somebody says, well, ten percent of my time in a week, that's four hours, but somebody else's ten percent of time is five hours?
Right.
Do we, do we, do we compare? I just, I want to make sure that we're getting a good sense in terms of, if we're going to start looking at that stuff, which I think is valuable to our citizens, it's valuable to me as a council member, that I've got a good sense as to what the true data is that I'm looking at. Does that make sense?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanaugh. I, I think the answer to that is really, again, we're looking at things overall from, not a weekly or a monthly, but an annual basis. So, you know, take for audit, for instance, you know, we spend several months doing audit, but that doesn't, you know, and all our time during, you know, those months, we may be spending fifty, a hundred, eighty percent, whatever that percentage is of our time during that time, overall, that might equal out to maybe ten, fifteen percent of our time overall. So we do have to estimate and, and look at, you know, how much time overall, and we, there is a cheat sheet, I don't have it here in the presentation, you can send it to if you like, but it does kind of give people kind of a rubric to look at and evaluate and say, all right, well, you know, based on this rubric, you know, is it five percent of my time? Is it ten percent of my time? That way they get a, a good estimation of, you know, how much time they spend on a specific program. And then once we've looked at that, and we've looked at our cost, we then need to send it, you know, do a sniff test, does it make sense? You know, or does that really make sense, whatever that number is? And if that does, then great, we move on. If it doesn't, then we reevaluate it. Again, we want useful information, good data, so we can make, you know, the, the right decisions, so to speak. Does that answer your question?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanaugh, just to add on what Brad's mentioning, you asked the question, forty hours, sixty hours, eighty hours. We take the total cost of the employee. So if you have a salaried employee who works fifty hours a week in your example, they still have a fixed salary. The amount of time someone allocates their ti, uh, the amount of time they allocate to a program still stays the same based on their assumption and their analysis of their time associated to a program. The cost is something we manage on an annual basis. So if you're a sixty thousand dollar a year employee, that dollar doesn't change whether you work a hundred hours a week or forty hours a week. So we are fixed on the cost factor. You tell me ten percent, five percent, twenty percent. So the cost is always kind of a, a static number. You will tell me the percentage of your time allocated, so we apply the information you give us to the fixed sixty thousand dollar annual salary. Hopefully that helps.
And what the program actually costs.
Yes.
Based on that.
Thank you.
Very good question.
Madam Mayor.
And, and remember that, so every employee filled it out. Then results were given back to the departments. They analyzed it themselves to see if it was appropriately allocated and, and now this next phase, they're reanalyzing all of that as well. So it's been a lot of different steps and a lot of touch points to, to verify. Ms. Mylan.
Oh, I think that, kind of to touch on what Councilman Cavanaugh was talking about. So this is for individual employee, correct? So not based on a position where one person could spend more, different time than another person doing the same thing. So it's individual, every employee. So that means every time we have a turnover or a new employee, they're going through this process. And at what point do they, do they do that?
I think you, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Mylan, appreciate that. So we, we really look at, yes, it is by an individual level, but it's also by position. We, every position has a position slot. So while we might have somebody changing from one role to the other, usually the, the job description stays the same, and I don't think we would see a lot of change. And if we did, we can, we can reallocate the, the time. If it turns out in a given year, as we look at it, look at it, that, you know, I'm actually spending more of my time doing a different program, then we can make that adjustment as we look at it. So this is something we envisioned being an, an annual process. As we look at it and say, all right, you know, last year we scored it this way, or we, we allocated it this way. Is that still true today? If it is, great, we move on and we're done. If it's not, or we have a new position, then we go through that process to kind of reevaluate that. Good question. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, sorry, that was to clarify, but I had a different question regarding the website. So when you click on one of these and you go into the tree.
Tree pot?
Yeah, the tree pot, okay. So when you, can you scroll down, go, scroll over something that's like fairly white?
We'll look at this one.
Oh, white.
Oh, white.
Great. So when you click something white, it turns really dark red, which makes it look really important. That's only because you're hovering on it.
Right.
But it's really one of the lesser, I don't know, it just seems to me, if it was a different color, I need to show you.
So like, you look in here.
It makes it look, yeah, it shows it as the darkest red as soon as you hover on it.
I think that's just because we're, make sure you're highlighting the right program. Because when you go away from it, you can see that it's no longer, it goes back to the, the score based, the color based on the way it was scored. So in this case, like on Operations Waste Water, it was scored the highest out of four, whereas you take like Home Court, sorry, it was scored as a, as a one, so to speak. Finance doesn't have a score because it was evaluated based on, because it's an internal program based on the government's, the good government result, the responsive government.
I, and I understand that. My guess, my question is, is there another way you can highlight it? It might be way beyond this, this point, without it turning into a four.
Yeah, let's, let's stay a little bit higher level. We're, this is still work in process, but.
Good, I can provide that feedback. So, you know, good question.
Hopefully you understand that, that, you know, it's more of a technical question, but it, it can, I can, I see where it could be confusing, especially if the public is using this, and you're like, wait, all of a sudden it's.
I, I believe that the reason for the change is simply, you know, to know we're highlighting the right program, is really what it's about. When we go away from it, you know, you can see, let me get back into this so I can, there we go. You can see, you know, when we're not highlighting anything, you can get an idea of, you know, which programs contribute most, like emergency response training is obviously scored very high, whereas you have this one right here, operational readiness, got a score of a zero on strategic growth, so obviously contributes last. I think it's just a function of just the way they've, they set it up. Does that help?
Yeah, no, I understand it.
Okay.
I just was hoping there was another way you can highlight it without training the same color.
Oh, right, no, right. At this time.
At this point, there's not.
Yeah. I can provide that feedback though.
Okay, thanks.
To the developers that do it, so, good questions.
Mr. Cavanaugh. Yes, a couple of other questions. Brad, the, the scoring part, what's the score designed to illustrate to the public? If something is scored one, what does that mean? And what does a score of four mean?
Good, very good question. Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanaugh, so there are, I think, fourteen different criteria that we look at when we score a program. So when we look at things from a strategic growth standpoint, we have a score of a four, which means that, or any of the strategic, strategic objectives. A score of four indicates it contributes most, or a score of a zero, meaning it doesn't really contribute to the result at all. That contributes, so there are, what, four of our strategic goals are scored zero to four. We also have five other one, other criteria that we have. Is it mandated by statute? We have, is it mandated by statute or by city ordinance? Is one, that gets a score of a four if it is, if it's something, or two, or a zero. What's the demand like for it in the future? Do we see it increasing, decreasing, staying the same? What is the reliance of the program? Do we see, is it, is it, what's the population is a fourth one? And cost recovery, are we considered with cost recovery? So we have, each one of these criteria receives its own individual score. There's some weighting and math involved that gives you an overall score that then allows you to evaluate a specific program against all the other programs. That might have been too far in the weeds.
Madam Mayor, I love it, I'm interested. I guess, I think what you're sharing with us is the public-facing version.
This is right.
And one of the things that we, we know time and time again as this body is, labels and designations mean a lot, and especially to the public, and what it communicates is really, really important. So however, when this goes live, whatever we're doing to make sure our citizens understand what a something of a four means versus something of a three, whether that's how you use it, or use some word to describe it, I just, I really, the goal is to better inform our citizens, and I don't want scores to complicate or confuse them without it delivering some benefit to them from seeing it.
They'll have definers of what the scoring means, so that there's a reference point, and certainly, we hope that maybe it stimulates conversation.
We like that, and that's why we do it. Thank you. I think, I appreciate the comments. You know, hopefully, you know, on the surface, looking at the shading of the score of each program gives you kind of an immediate look of, all right, well, and with that definition of darker means it contributes more, lighter, less type of thing, hopefully that will help explain that as well, but...
Madam Mayor, one additional question. When approximately is this going to go live, and when can council get access, I guess, to the internal portion, or if we're only going to have access to the external portion? I don't know. I love this.
Sure, right now.
And I want to be able to click around, kind of like you did with us, but I don't know when we're going to be able to do that.
We're still in the middle of the scoring aspect of that, so we haven't really made a decision of when this would go live, so anybody can look into it and click around and explore. We'll have those conversations, and we can do that. Giving you guys access to it, I think, would be a good thing as well, so we can talk about when. I would, I think we would wait till at least we have everything done.
Yeah.
Right, so we have everything finalized, and then move from there.
Certainly, this wouldn't go live until they're done, they'll come back for an update. I would imagine that they would kind of put it internal to let everyone use, work out any bugs, and also help identify questions that, once you do launch it to the public, hopefully we have already addressed, identified the question, maybe an FAQ, but work some of those, those bugs out, and you'll be the guinea pigs.
There is a tutorial when you log into it that goes over and explains kind of what different parts of the site are, how they work type of thing, which I think will help. So, yeah, we're learning. This is a good, good conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Oh, sorry, one last slide. You know, PBB, it's a culture we're trying to develop. You know, we're trying to give people, those in, you know, have the authority, you know, information. You know, it's one tool in the toolbox that allows us to make decisions, allows you and, you know, mayor and council to consider, you know, what priorities are being funded, and what decisions are being made. So it's, it's just a way to start a conversation, and to, you know, give another tool in the toolbox, so to speak, so...
It's been a great tool to have conversations about projects, and if they have shelf lives, and are they still relevant, and if not, should we still be doing it? Finding those efficiencies and the inefficiencies. So it's, it's a great conversation tool, as well, as why we do things, and if you're looking to fund one project, and you think, what, we don't have time to do all of this, then you start evaluating where your resources are going, and if it's netting the kind of outcomes that you're looking for. So it's an exciting tool.
Awesome.
I like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Good job.
Hey, item 5D, under Finance, with our quarterly update.
Long time no see. It's good to see you guys again. Quarterly update, it's my November update and December for you. This is our update that will provide you information on this particular, and a lot of property tax discussion. And most of you have seen this presentation. We do have our new council member here, so, but he's pretty familiar with this. I'll go through this pretty quickly. If the other two council members were here, I would probably gone a little slower, but I don't think they're here. So I might go through this a little quick, since you guys have seen this, I think, four or five times. So again, calculate...
And they'll have a chance to watch it by YouTube.
They could.
And they can slow it down if they need to.
They definitely could, thank you, Mayor. So today we're going to do Property Tax calculation 101, talk about our rate history, the tax burden that we manage here at the city, a little comparison, and then give you an update on our next quarterly update in February, March. So with that, Property Tax 101. You've seen this, we are bound by state statutes. The state actually gives us a statute in Title 63, Chapter 8, that gives the cities the authority to raise taxes by 3%. So we do follow the state law, and we do offer you guys the opportunity to have the chance to increase quote-unquote taxes by the allowable 3%. And then there's also Title 63, Chapter 3, that Ada County kind of manages on our behalf, which has to do with new construction and annexation revenue. They manage that on behalf of the city. We do not manage that, they just kind of tell us what the number is, and we add it or not add it to our tax request for the upcoming year. So again, just a little 101, there are two state statutes that we must follow, and I can let you know that we do follow on an annual basis. We do have that one lever to pull, which is the 3%. Again, property tax calculation, what is it? How is it calculated? And how do we do this? So property tax calculation is made up of four parts, you've seen this slide, it's base property, base property taxes. This is determined by the highest approved certified amount over the last previous three years. So for us, it's been pretty easy, it's always the previous year. Some, some cities have a higher year, the two previous years. For us, it's been pretty easy to manage, it's always the last fiscal year for us. Again, base property taxes, as I've described to you, is what I consider the revenues necessary to conduct the business for our citizens today. So we have approved the budget for 2020. Your departments are managing that budget, and that is now known as our base budget for fiscal '21. If no new growth, no new population, no new everything, if everything stays true and the world stood still, that base property tax would cover the necessary expenses to continue the services that we do today, because that's what we've determined, that's what we need. Unfortunately, we don't live in a city that stands still, we're in a constant growth method, so we have other revenue sources to help us meet those needs, and those are going to be the 3% allowable. I've always promoted to you, this is our cost of doing business. Again, if the world stood still, but benefits went up, fuels and gasoline went up, I need some way to pay for those, because my base revenue didn't change. This allows me to pay for the higher gas prices, the higher medical prices, the higher cell phone prices, and things like that. So this is my cost of doing business. Again, if the world stood still, we would not have new construction, but since we're in a high development time period, new construction is given to us by Ada County. They allow us to have additional revenue to pay for the growth needs. So again, we would not have the revenue if we didn't have the growth, so we will use this revenue source to pay for the needs to meet our new growth demands. And the same thing with annexation. Again, if we had no growth, we would have no revenue, but in this case, in our city, over the last 10 years or 20 years, we've been growing a lot. We have annexation revenue that's going to cover the new growth demands on police, fire, and parks, and so forth, so we use that money to pay for the growth requests. So again, we break down our budget, property tax budget into three, into these four columns. Base budget covers what we're doing today. Can we make sure we're providing the services tomorrow for what we do today? 3% is our cost of doing business, make sure we cover those increases in inflation. New construction and annexation is the new growth. That's the additional monies that we're getting to cover the new demands placed upon the city on an annual basis. That is Property Tax 101, on how it's built. The question is, how does Ada County manage and calculate the property tax levy for us? They take our total requested property tax request, then they divide that by the total value of the city of Meridian for all property above the ground, and that comes to the total levy rate for the city of Meridian by itself. So if we put that with the actual data that we have for fiscal year 2020, we had requested from the council, or not council, I apologize, you guys requested from the state and the county, 36.3 million. Ada County informed us that they had $11.7 billion worth of property in the city of Meridian. You divide the two numbers, that gets you a levy rate of .003. So they do all the math for us, we only supply the property tax value, they do the other parts for us. And here's your levy rate comparison since 2011, and you can see for the last eight years in a row, the levy rate has gone down. If Joe Borton was here, he would have said it's because of him. Ever since he's been here, it's gone down, but he's not here to defend him, so I'll say for him. So with that, Joe, or not Joe, but the levy rate has gone down eight years in a row, which is pretty awesome. We're almost at sub-three, the last time we're at sub-three is in 2008. Next year, I guarantee we'll be below 3%, the .003. We're super close, you can see how close we were, breaking the three number, but it's been since 2008 since we've been under three. Next year, no doubt, we'll be under three for the levy rate for our citizens, which is pretty awesome. So with that, that's the Property Tax 101, how we calculate it, how we get there. Levy rate history, this is our base property tax requests since 2008. Again, increases every year, this incredible growth that we've had here at the city of Meridian. Allowable increase in property taxes is that one lever we have to pull, it's your 3%. You can see a few blanks in there, 2011 and 12. This council did elect not to take any percentage of the 3% allowable, and you can see last year's revenue adjustment with that. New construction, so Ada County determines this amount, we have no real influence on this, other than approving projects that you guys approve on a weekly basis from the community development, economic development world. And then the same thing with the annexation, these are the projects proposed to you, if you wish to annex them into the city, we get a revenue source from those decisions that you guys make annually. And you put it all together, you can see that the base property taxes is by far the majority of our revenue source on the property tax income. Fiscal year 2020 is currently sitting at $36.37 million for property tax. Questions are always asked every year, how often, and do we take the 3%, and how often do we not? There's your answer. Two years we did not, in 2011 and 12. You can see 2% in 17, and last year was 1.5. I do want to ask you to take note, what happened in 11 and 12, again, we did not take the property taxes in 11 and 12, in the years before that, we took the 3% every single year. I'm going to reference that comment here in a second, but if you can remember that, that'll be awesome. This is your property tax burden slide. So where does our property tax come from? That is what this slide answers. You can see a majority of it is residential, and the second leading revenue generator is commercial. Another way to look at it is this way, 67.9% of your revenue comes from property tax, the residential version, and then the rest, and the next largest portion of 25% is from commercial, and then a lot of little ones in the middle. So again, we're still heavily, heavy, heavy on the residential side, you can see historically we've always been that way. I know we're making some changes in the next few years with some great commercial projects coming on, we'll see what the burden does, does it shift? Again, we'll find out, and we'll report that to you every single, every single year for you. General Fund Tax Levy Comparison, this is something we do every May of 2019. I don't have the latest data until next May, or this coming May. But what this does is, this shows you the general fund levy rate as compared to the cities that we compare against. You can see that we're the third lowest in the comparison. You can see our neighboring city, Boise, in May 2019, is a little over six, we're a little over three, so they're twice as high as us in the levy rate. You can see Mountain Homes, larger, and Eagle and Tuna are a little bit lower than us. We manual, we analyze this every single year to see how we're doing compared to our fellow neighboring agencies. Questions have been asked of me, well, are you comparing apples to apples? It's nearly impossible to apples to apples, but, you know, it's about as close as I can get. This slide is the information that tells you, or shows you what we're trying to compare against. If you notice, the city of Meridian has one levy rate, and that is accurate. We only have one levy rate compared to the city of Boise, has two distinct levy rates they charge their citizens. Caldwell has seven, and Pocatello has nine. Again, each city can choose how many levy rates they want. You might notice that Caldwell has seven of them, they have a recreation, and they have a streets, you know, we obviously don't have streets, we have Ada County. But the slide before this was a comparison of that shaded area right in the middle. I tried to compare apples to apples as close as I could. Boise Airport is enterprise fund, so they don't have a levy rate for airports in Boise. But we tried to show general fund to general fund to general fund, this is the closest apples-to-apples analysis I can do for you. Again, we include everything in ours, some agencies have recreation separate, so they actually have to add even more to their general fund. So this is a, just a report for you to try to show the best we could, an apples-to-apples approach on what the general fund levy rate looks like from city to city in our analysis. And then another way to look at it is, if Mr. Palmer had a $200,000 home in each one of these cities, this is how much property taxes he would pay in each one of these cities for his $200,000 home, with the tax exemption pulled out of it. And you can see the city of Meridian's doing very well compared to the other cities. If Mr. Palmer had a house in every single one of these cities, as a comparative analysis for you. Again, just looking at the general fund line, not looking at the total line, it would be much, much larger gap, because we would add zero extra levy rates to ours, because we only have one. Pocatello would add eight more data points to theirs. So again, this is the best I could do from an apples-to-apples comparison. Question over here, Luke, I see some thoughts going on over there.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner?
Thanks, Todd. And not thoughts, but just more, if we really want to do make a true apples-to-apples comparison, your point is correct. The city of Meridian, we've got one levy rate, but our citizens, we don't have a municipal cemetery district, but most of us who live in Meridian pay into the Meridian Cemetery District, it's not ran by the city. And I think that it would be beneficial, as we continue this conversation, that we do take a, oh, look at you, there you are, you're, you're ahead of me. But, Madam Mayor, then to this point...
Or are you ahead of me?
I'm always behind the finance department, happily to be behind the finance department. It would be beneficial to take this and compare it with some other municipalities, because there are some communities that they have their own levy rate for a service that is offered by another taxing district. I think it gives a more holistic picture, especially for our new council members, I think that is a more apples-to-apples comparison as we head down the road.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, we can definitely do that if you wish. We don't do the fully loaded levy rates by every district, because every district kind of manages it, but to answer your question, Luke, you are correct, this data that I have previously shown you is city of Meridian only. We only represent 28.52% of the common house in city of Meridian. So, you know, for us to say that, hey, we can lower your taxes, or we'll never raise your taxes, is an impossible statement to make by anybody, because we only represent 28.52%. Yeah, we can take, not take the 3%, but if the other 62% or 72% of the agencies raise their rates, well, you've just now falsely stated that you won't raise their taxes, because they actually raised your taxes. So it's nearly impossible for us to ever say that we can not raise or lower your taxes, because we only represent 28.52%. If you go to Boise, I think Boise represents 40 percent of their levy rate. If you go to Pocatello, I think it's even higher. So every district and every house is going to be a little different. I mean, I hear what you're saying, Kavner, but, I mean, this is the best we can do, if we can do the analysis, but we just want to use this slide to inform you and everybody that, you know, we only make up 28.52 percent of your total levy rate, 72 percent's controlled by somebody else. And we're doing the best we can. The levy rate did go down eight years in a row, as you saw. At the end of the day, Ada County has a bigger influence on if you pay more taxes or not. And the next few slides are going to support that argument and explain to you how that works. We do track six homes here at the city. We track it for, we've been tracking it since 2000. This is just the current values of the six homes that we track right now. This is the current average of the property taxes paid annually by the six homes. Again, this is an average, low over 700 bucks or $58 a month, or, so you compare that to your monthly dues, your, you know, your cell phone bill or whatnot, you're paying $58 a month to live here in the city of Meridian. If you remember back in that slide, I stated that you did not take the three percent in 2011 and 12, but you can see that property taxes went up in 2011 and 12 on average. In the years 2007, 2008, 2009, you took your full three percent, but the taxes went down. Again, completely counterintuitive, I know. Because Ada County has the largest influence on property tax paid than we do. Again, you raised taxes, taxes went down in those four years. You didn't take taxes, taxes went up in those two years. So again, please don't think that, taking the three percent, you have a direct influence on whether or not the property taxes will go up. This is the example of that. Ada County has a much larger influence on their valuation. We had one house that actually paid less taxes in 15, 16, and 17, because of the valuation that Ada County conducted on their home. Again, they, even though we did the same thing to the other five homes. So again, it really just comes down to Ada County and how they value your home at the end of the day. Again, so I just wanted to share this, that we represent 28.52 percent of your total tax bill. Ada County has a larger influence on what you pay for your, your home taxes. I'm a taxpayer just like you guys, I want to pay less in taxes, but Ada County has a larger influence on that. And it's a good thing to have your house go up, again, it's a great thing. But again, just information for you on how property taxes work 101. This is a quick slide of what property taxes make up from the general fund. Makes up 58 percent. You only have one little lever in that entire bucket, that's the three percent. Everything else is controlled by the state or the county. If you add up intergovernmental and property tax, that's 74 percent of our general fund revenue. And of that, you have a small influence of three percentish of the allowable tax. So let's make sure we manage the revenues correctly, because it influences not today, but also tomorrow's council, because it's going to compound and impact them. So again, just a request, just a reminder that we need to manage our property taxes as best we can, because we have nothing really else to lean on. As you can see, everything else is controlled by somebody else. So let's just make sure we always have a good discussion about property taxes, a quick recap of what we've done, and then where I'm going to go on our next quarterly meeting, which is our annual update from the previous fiscal year's audit report, changes to fund balance and your top revenues and expenses. Hopefully, that wasn't too fast. I know time is ticking behind me, so I want to allow for any questions. Apologize for the quickness, but I know you guys are short on time.
Thank you, Todd. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
We have a question, and if you don't have the answer right now, you can maybe email us. Most of your slides referred back to 2008-ish, except for the levy rate. Started at like 2011. And I'm curious, because what happens in a recession, where now we've got a big budget, and we have a recession, then the values of the property go down, so the levy rate goes up.
You got it.
And so I'm curious what the levy rate was. The budget was a lot smaller back then as well, but what the levy rate was in like '09 and '10, '08. Just kind of see that, because I wanted to see that curve, but for some reason, on that one, it started a little later.
Madam Mayor, just, I'll be happy to send that email out to you tonight. We have the graph, we'll go back.
There's no hurry, Todd.
We already have it, so we'll go send it off to you. We have it from beginning of time. So yes, you'll see it, it goes up and down, up and down.
Yeah.
You got it.
So if there was a recession now, next year, then I guess it would depend on how bad it got.
I believe we were under three, couple of those years.
Well, 2008 was the last time we were under three. So it's been quite a while.
Nine and two, yeah, okay.
Been quite a while.
Okay. Thanks, Todd.
Appreciate the question.
Thank you, Todd.
Cool.
I guess now we'll launch into your policy discussion.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good to see you guys again. Policy update, I'll make this quick. Promises not as many slides. So today's agenda, I'm looking to present to you a change to our ordinance, 1.9, Title One, Chapter Nine. I'm going to give you a proposal, show you what it currently reads as, give you a current list of policies that are inside the current existing ordinance, and then give you a recommendation on our behalf of what we would like to see the ordinance read for your behalf. You should have all the documents, we sent them out a month ago, that states everything.
And that we're 10 minutes to six.
I'm making this quick. So current Title Nine, or Title One, Chapter Nine, there's Section 1.91, which is definitions. Just to let you know, the current one has one definition in it. 1.92 says it's investments, it contains audit approaches, and contains a bunch of definitions. 1.9.3 is budget policy, contains definitions, procedures, and fund management. We don't think that's a good representation of what Title One, Chapter Nine should be. So we are proposing to you that Title One, Chapter Nine be changed to what's in the blue section. 1.91 would be a general provisions, which gives you the compliance and the adoption statement, so it kind of gives the authority who can approve the policies set forth, set into this ordinance. 1.92, again, is the actual people who can actually be the authority figures, which are going to be you guys, city council, at the end of the day, for these particular policies. And 1.93 is actually a list of policies that we would like for you guys to recognize as city of Meridian financial management policies.
Todd, hold on. Just to let the record note that Councilman Borton has joined us. Thank you, I was waiting for you to take a breath and.
Sorry about that. Trying to get through it for you.
Take your time, Todd. This is important stuff. Don't feel the need to rush.
Eight minutes.
Got plenty, as much time as you need.
So with that, appreciate that, Luke. The current policy or ordinance, 1.9, has one policy in it, the budget. We are recommending that 1.9, Title One, Chapter Nine, actually has eight policies. That's our recommendation to you. The policies in detail have been provided to you. The policies are best practices, as Brad mentioned earlier, by the Finance Officers' Association, best practices that we've been conducting here at the city for years. We're now documenting our best practices in a, in a formal policy item. Who reviewed these? We had two council members help review these policies that are in front of you today. We had one external auditor, Aid Bailey, they reviewed all of these as well. We had two legal department employees help review all of these. We had two external departments, we had city of Boise and ACHD have worked with their finance department team members to review these as well. We had five internal finance department members, and we provided the mayor and the department directors for a comment period on these review, on these policies as well. I know the time is here, apologize, I went through them super, super fast. There is some action I'm looking for from you guys. The action is, are you okay with changing Title One, Chapter Nine, as proposed, taking it from what it was to where we want to go? If the action is yes, you're okay with this, I'll have legal draft up the official ordinance change for your consideration next week. But with that, I stand for any questions on any of the policies that you have a question about as presented.
Questions for Todd.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Todd, appreciate the involvement in the process. Good work on you and your team. If there aren't any questions, I'm happy. We approve the finance update to the city policies as presented by the CFO, and to bring it back next week.
By resolution.
Resolution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, motion is second to adopt the policies as presented, bringing it back in resolution form. I think we can do a roll call, and next week, do the, do I need to do a roll call?
Madam Mayor, you don't need to do a roll call today, but we'll bring back both the resolution and the ordinance for next week's.
Okay, thank you. Well, then the motion is to bring this back, approve the policies as presented, bring it back in ordinance and resolution form. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good job.
Thank you, guys. Sorry for the speedy presentation, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. This, the 5G will be on our regular agenda, we also listed it on that. Council, do you, do you want to listen to 5F right now as well? So I'll turn this over.
Excuse me, Keith.
Cameron or Keith?
They're bringing it back based on the feedback.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good to be with you. I am standing in a little bit tonight. Caleb's not feeling well, and was hopeful to be here, but isn't able, but wanted to just make sure we're capturing any additional information that you had, and particularly turn this over to Keith to give you a little bit of an update on, on where we are with the ride share proposal. So turn that over to Keith.
Thanks, Cameron.
All right, thanks, Cameron. What I have done is just massaged our draft RFP a little bit further. Really here today to get further direction from you folks. We did have a couple of areas that were not set on last time we were here. The first one that I'll bring up is the fee schedule. We didn't come up with a solid fee schedule, looking to counsel for direction, up, down.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Keith, you want us to take these one by one?
Yeah, I think that would probably be, I have four bullet points that I want to hit, and I think that would be best.
So, Madam Mayor, council, Keith and I talked a little bit about this before the meeting, and I know that there was a recommendation, I think maybe from Caleb, Emily, and Keith, to lower the amount from 25 to 12.5? Is that correct?
12,000.
12,000.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
The comments that I shared with Keith, I'll share with you, is we are talking a lot about fee recovery and cost recovery, and to me, I want to make sure whatever we're charging the operator recovers the cost of us operating the program. It sounds like we don't have a good sense as to if lowering it would recapture that cost. And so I'm not supportive of lowering it until we have a cost that we say, whether it's a dollar less or a dollar more, however much, until we can say this is what we think the cost is for us to operate the program, not supportive of lowering it. And I shared that with Keith, I'll share that with you. The argument can be made by lowering it, it might invite more participation in the RFP process, it may or may not. We had two that participated last time when it was at the 25,000. So I guess my suggestion would be to keep it as is.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't hear any other comments, so.
Okay, the other, or the next one that I had up was to either share, for the, for the proposers to share their efforts in keeping underage or unlicensed riders off the scooters. I know Councilman Mylum had brought up that she didn't believe that any of them could actually force, which there is no, no way for them to control, to guarantee that they're not going to have them, but what efforts do the individual proposers take in trying to keep underage or unlicensed riders off of the scooters? Whether that be through training, community outreach, whatever systems they have in place? And if we, if, if council's interested, I will include that in the RFP, and also include in the value, you know, a point score for that as an actual criteria. I think it is, from being a part of it last year, I think it would be in our best interest to do so.
I think that would be helpful.
All right, I also added a spot under the franchise premises that excludes the village. We list what our franchise premises are. We did hear from Bird that said they may not be interested if the village is off the table. We don't control that, so I added a little bit of language that states that the village is not included in the city's franchise premises, and it would be up to the individual proposer to negotiate an agreement, if they could, with the village. But we cannot guarantee that.
Madam Mayor.
And that would be the same with any of those destinations, like Roaring Springs, and so if it's privately owned, that's up to them to negotiate. Ms. Mylum.
Well, I just don't understand why that's such an issue for them. I agree with what you're saying, but Clyter Park is right there. I think it's lined up 100 of them at Clyter Park, and people go walk across the street. I mean, gets you to the village.
That's just a statement that they had made.
I'm just saying, you could give them that feedback.
I'm sure they're well aware of that.
I don't, I don't think we need to give suggestions.
And then the other key point that I have is number of scooters, minimum and maximum. I know we didn't settle on anything. Some didn't want to give a minimum, let the market dictate. The only problem is, we could get a vendor who was successful and then deploys none. Or somebody wants to deploy 500 when 100 is necessary. So I think we need some type of guideline in our RFP. And what I'm really saying is in our contract, so in our RFP, like we said before, we have the RFP, which is the solicitation information, and the second half of the RFP that we send out is a sample contract, and we, I want them to know what they'll be presenting, proposing against, what will be required of them when we do move forward into negotiations, so we don't have to start from scratch in negotiations. They have an idea of what we're looking for.
I, I think, unless anyone has issues, I think we're in agreement with what you've proposed.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Actually, that was the thing that I did have an issue with, is the maximum. Because we don't know if we're going to have one vendor or two, and so I think putting that maximum in the RFP, it could be really hindering their business as well. So if the, if the need calls for 400, and they have a maximum in their contract of 200, then, and there's one vendor, you understand where I'm going with it? So I, I think that that could really, really kind of cripple a business.
Yeah, the way it is, as Councilman Mylum, council members, Madam Mayor, the way it is structured right now in the agreement is they have a minimum of 100, and that the city has stated a maximum of 500. If you want to make that 1,000, whatever, we put a maximum that we want allowable within the city, and then the, each vendor may request increases, and there's a increased schedule of when they can actually ask for the increase and how many. And if one vendor does the increase and maxes the city out, then that would be their right. The other vendor would not be able to, because we'd have maxed out the number of scooters on the, on the city's streets.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Yeah, I agree with you with that, and what our city maximum at a higher number like that, but what I read in the sample contract was a low number, like 150. It was really low, so.
I'd have to take a look. I, I thought we'd started with 500, I thought was our minimum.
It was like a minimum of 100 and a maximum of 200, or something like that, and what was in the, on the agenda.
Yeah, we've gone back and forth, because we haven't had direction, so. I would just like to have clear direction from council on what you would like to see.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
To that point, the 150 being a cap, I think our prior, our user this year didn't get to that.
No.
So if there were any change, I'd get rid of the minimum. If they make their business decision that 10 scooters is really all they want to have out there, then why deny them that? It makes more sense than having scooters that aren't being utilized, sitting in a sidewalk. If they're utilized, they'll certainly provide scooters, and if they're not, what's the point of having them out there? That's letting the business determine what's the most profitable way to operate.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just a comment to the minimum. I think if we anticipate a low minimum, say 10 scooters, I think then we get to a point of the viability of the program in general. You know, do we, I know we don't want to say, hey, no, we don't want this, or we do, or we don't, but at what expense and at what time do we as, as staff put to something that is only providing 10 scooters on our, on our city streets? So I would just maybe put that out as a philosophical.
And to that point, I did, if there's 10 scooters deployed and 10 are being ridden, or there's 100 scooters deployed and 10 are being ridden, I think that's the same thing, and the former is better. And the former is better.
Councilman, Councilman Borton, council members, Madam Mayor, the other thing I would like to point out, when we had the one vendor last year, it could be a strategic move for a vendor to just lock down the city of Meridian and not deploy anything. They've won by keeping competitors from moving into the system, into the city, and not been at any expense. And I've, that sentiment's been talked about by more than myself, I know, and, and other areas as well. So it's just a consideration, something to think about.
Madam Mayor, I think if, if I recall, that was the reason why we last established a minimum threshold, was that we didn't want to have a operator in name only that wasn't operating. Now, I guess my belief is that if a vendor's going to fork out $25,000 in a fee to be able to operate here, they're going to do their best to make sure that it pencils out for them. Could be wrong, though.
Okay, so staff is looking for direction.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll just make the statement. There is, some of you are for, some of you against issuing the RFP, the feasibility. So I'd like, you know, clear direction on how you'd like us to move forward.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Keith, is it your recommendation, the draft in front of us, which says, as to each franchisee, franchisee, at least 100, no more than 150, is how it reads, highlighted in yellow, I think in the, in the packet. So based upon last year's program, is that the recommendation of how to go forward this next year?
I, I think the last discussion with our group would be for the deployment and minimum, and to maintain 100, no more than 150 at, at the beginning. If, if we want to move to 500, to give them the ability, they're, they're going to have to do it in increments, as it states in the, in the contract portion of the RFP. I don't know if you want, you know, if they find out it's viable, I wouldn't want to restrict them.
Right.
And very much like, you know, some of you have mentioned, I think the market dictates that. If we're going to move forward with this program, I, I would let the market dictate what's profitable for them. But I would like to think-
But at least you are kept in the loop of information.
Correct.
So they would come back to council for that increase.
And, and speaking directly to that, Madam Mayor, Joe, it's the, the increase, item two, the increase is up to 500. So they would do it in increments.
Okay.
As, as been described.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Yeah, and 500 sounds good. I think that, but read carefully where that says up to 150, because it, we all read it the same way, then the prospective companies are going to read it the same way too, possibly. And if they're going to be maxed out at 150, why even bother submitting to the RFP? So.
Yeah, I would, I, I'll make sure, I'll read through there, make sure it makes sense to myself and to Caleb and Emily before we send this out. Another thing that I'll throw up there, I'll offer, if we're going to go through with this, I would recommend having a pre-proposal conference, letting vendors come in after they get the RFP and ask questions before they propose.
Great. That's a great idea. Thank you for your work.
So, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Do you feel like you've got the right response to the questions that you came with tonight in terms of how to best move forward?
I think so. I think between the committee that's working on this, we can get this ironed out and, and on the street within probably another two weeks.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for you or staff or legal. Can we issue direction to issue the RFP and to encompass the comments that we've shared here tonight, and staff will be able to move forward?
That would be awesome.
So, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
So this will probably be my last one of the night. I, I move that we direct staff to issue the RFP to encompass the comments heard amongst the council tonight, and to schedule a pre-meeting with potential vendors to get any questions answered.
Okay.
And since you went by those details one at a time, you are clear with what those details are?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
Okay. Just wanted to verify. Okay. And I have a motion in a second to move this forward. And the, the timeline on this.
I would say that we could have the RFP, we can get the ad into the newspaper this Friday, so it will advertise next Friday, and then follow our schedule that we had in the draft.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. And thank you for going through it, item by item, and, and fully vetting those.
Thank you.
We appreciate your recommendations, too. Yes.
If you need clarification, there's a YouTube video you can-
Slow down.
Yeah. Okay, I would, the last item, we also have posted on the regular meeting agenda. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our work session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We adjourn. Second.
A motion in second to adjourn our work session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carry.